Good evening. It's 6:00 PM and we'll call to order the October 26, 2022, meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. In taking role, I see Dr. Martin is the only one not present. Everybody had a chance to review the draft minutes? Any questions or changes? None being heard, we will approve those minutes. Mr. Meesimer, is there any correspondence unrelated to tonight's task?
No correspondence. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. We'll move on to Section D of the agenda, new business. And tonight's agenda will not, I want to be clear, will not include public commentary. It's not a hearing. Tonight, we are receiving a large download of information about the draft Anacortes Housing Plan and potential position paper on the bonus height provisions. And that will be the meat of tonight's discussion. Mr. Meesimer, can we proceed with Item 1, the Draft Anacortes Housing Action Plan Presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, tonight, we have with us Bob Bangford and Scott Bonjokian with Makers Architecture and Urban Design. They're going to lead us through a PowerPoint presentation on the Draft Housing Action Plan. And I would like to just mention that we've been working on this now, I want to say, about five months with input from the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee, the Council Committee, as well as various surveys and other. And Scott and Bob will go through that as they work through their presentations. So, take it away, Scott and Bob.
Shoot, unmuting. Thank you, Don, and good evening, planning commissioners. And Scott's joining me here, too, visible on Zoom. Yeah, it's good to be back here. Enjoyed working with the Planning Commission and the community on the comprehensive plan. In fact, let's just go to the next slide, just a little bit of background on this. Of course, the comprehensive plan, the housing policies and components kind of set the stage along with the zoning code update that we did immediately after that, between 2016 and 2018. And then also those ideas in the 2017 Affordable Housing Strategic Plan integrated into this. And then the city received a grant from the Department of Commerce that helped with our scope. And just will say that the HAP is a policy document. It's trying to do a lot of data on what the, really, what the full housing situation is, and then in turn develop goals and strategies to promote safe and affordable housing options for all. Next slide. So, we started with the project as kind of as part of our scope and how we did the engagement. And the rest of our work started with looking at these questions as to, you know, what's the most pressing housing needs in Anacortes for each segment of the population? And then what most are we concerned about and most hopeful about regarding residential development in the next 10-plus years? Also, what code updates can further be made to meet the goals here? What are the biggest longstanding barriers to affordable housing and more diverse housing supply? And then what new and updated tools, policies, and funding resources can we use to effectively meet the city's housing goals? Next question, or next slide. So, some key housing goals that came out of the plan focused on supply and variety, housing affordability, and then also meeting some of the special needs housing. Next slide. So, the schedule, again, since a lot of this is really based on data, you could see the existing conditions review there extended for seven-plus months. And then Scott here has led largely, most of these, a lot of stakeholder interviews have happened. And also, a housing survey was put together. And then there's been meetings with the HACX Committee as well. And then, of course, we're in the process here of developing the, in fact, we just have the draft, it's just been produced, of putting together the initial stab at some of these strategies, and then, of course, lead into the adoption over the next few months here. And I think Scott's going to take the next many slides here.
Thanks, Bob. Again, Scott Bonjokian with Makers, got to be back in Anacortes as well. Bob threatened that we have a lot of data and numbers here to throw at you. And so, we have Leland Consulting Group based out of Portland to thank for that. Their staff, Chris and Andrew, have been our subconsultants on this, on kind of the economics and the real estate side of it. So, I just want to summarize some of the key points that are in the existing conditions and housing needs report. And some of that's also going to carry over into the actual draft housing action plan in your packet tonight. So, I'll just hit the high points to kind of summarize the challenges, and of course, it's facing. So, a lot of our numbers are looking back towards 2016 because that's when Anacortes updated its comprehensive plans. We kind of want to stay in that same cycle of timing and thinking. This is just a quick map showing across the city where housing production has occurred since then. The bigger the green dot, the larger the housing development has been. So, you can see it's been scattered pretty much fairly evenly across town. A lot of the small dots, you'll see, those have been a lot of single-family developments and just a handful of larger multifamily or townhouse developments, kind of on the east and central part of town. Anacortes has been growing at an average rate of a population growth of 1.7% per year, which is, just for reference, it's not a huge number, but it's also not nothing. People are definitely continuing to move to Anacortes each year because it's an attractive place to live, frankly, and people who are already living here are having kids. Workers are being attracted here, which is kind of what happens. The comprehensive plan's 20-year growth target after 2016 is to see about 2,600 new dwelling units. So, if that were to be broken down on average over 20 years, that target requires about 131 new housing units to be built per year. But you can see there in the chart, Anacortes is not quite achieving that, with the exception of last year in 2021, which is also the most recent year we've seen some diversification in the housing types being brought to markets, particularly townhomes and some multifamily. And again, we think that, I don't think Makers can take all the credits, but that was a couple of years after the code was adopted to allow a little bit more flexibility and encouragement of those more diverse housing types. So, on average, only about 101 new units are being built per year. So, Anacortes has a bit of catch-up to do and then needs to kind of accelerate in the future if it wants to start to meet that target. Also, looking at the city's land supply, obviously, Anacortes is on an island, and you're not interested in expanding out into the rural areas or your preserved forest areas, obviously. But because of the current zoning, there's also a potential shortage of buildable land capacity, or, in other words, empty lots or older homes and older properties that are on the cusp of being able to redevelop. There's a shortage of opportunities for that. We also have a section in the report we call Project Spotlights. We've got five or six projects in there that highlight some of these recent construction projects that have been built or are in the planning stages over the next few years, just to give a snapshot of some of the variety of housing types, ranging from cottages to apartments, townhomes, and even the unique cohousing projects. So, housing costs are on the rise, not only in Anacortes, but really statewide and even nationwide. And that's thanks to a number of factors, including inflation, the labor shortage, supply chain, hang-ups and things like that, but also it's simply from a lack of supply. And we can kind of visualize just how dramatic the change has been over the past 10 years or so. The first line here looks at home value, which has increased, indexed to 2012, home value has increased about 70%. But when we look at incomes, the gray line here, those have only gone up about 25%. So, folks interested in, especially in the young professionals and new families trying to get into the home buying market are definitely struggling. Rents have been keeping pace somewhat with incomes, although we've also heard in the last couple of years, beyond 2020, which is the end of this chart, the pandemic and other things have definitely also accelerated rental prices as well. Construction costs to actually build homes of all types was a key topic discussed with the project stakeholders, and I think we also got some feedback of that through the survey, people who are developing their own homes. There's a summary of conversations about how costs are affecting different parts of the market, from single-family to multifamily projects. But Leland's findings are that the construction costs right now are the highest they have been in the last 50 years. And there's not really a sign of that abating anytime in the near future, given the pandemic-induced issues just kind of exacerbated previous issues with the construction supply chain and the trades industry. Preliminary data for 2022 indicates a potentially even greater jump. So, this obviously cost of construction is important because that directly relates into the housing prices that the seller or the renter ultimately pays. In terms of looking towards the future, in 2045, which will be the kind of the end date of the next planning period when Anacortes updates its next comprehensive plan, we worked with Leland to calculate how much new additional housing units will be needed to just account for kind of net population growth. There's about 3,000 additional new homes will be needed at a variety of income levels. Again, that compares to the, through 2035 target, a target of 2,600 homes. There's a little bit of overlap there, they don't add up, but I think it shows that the need is increasing a little bit. Generally, there's higher demand for ownership housing at higher income levels, which is a bit intuitive. And the distribution of incomes is likely to change as new residents move to the area and economic conditions change. Some other notes is that senior housing is particularly needed in Anacortes, there's a higher-than-average older adult population, and those folks tend to look for downsized homes or single-level homes to make their silver years a little bit more better quality of life. And also, small housing units are in demand. There's, Anacortes has a significant percentage of people, 29% of one-person households. So, obviously, you have folks in that category looking for studios or one-bedroom homes or apartments. We can also break this down by housing cost burden. So, a household is considered cost burden when everyone in the household combined pays more than 30% of their income towards housing, whether that's the rents or the mortgage, HOA fees, property taxes, utilities, things like that. And it's just kind of a general rule of thumb number that's been used by planners for the last few decades, because above that percentage, if you pay more than that for your housing, you tend to be more at risk of defaulting on your mortgage or being forced into homelessness or not being able to pay for other basic life needs like healthcare and food, childcare, and things like that. And so, 30% of all households in Anacortes are considered cost burden, which is a pretty significant amount. And it doesn't, it cuts a little bit differently if whether you own your home or you rent your home. Almost half of renter households are cost burdened, and only 10% of homeownership households are cost burdened. Two-thirds of lower-income folks in Anacortes are cost burdened, and more than a third of senior households earn less than 80% of the area income, which relates to the average income of people living in the Anacortes and Skagit County area. The data also shows a significant need for new subsidized housing, meaning housing vouchers or public housing that's not, for people making incomes that can't be supported by the private market. On this next chart, just to walk through it, since there's a lot going on here, the orange columns are home prices affordable to people making the incomes shown by the adjacent blue bars. So, for example, in the middle there, a $316,000 home is affordable, is the maximum price that a family earning $75,000 can afford. But when we go up and we look at that horizontal orange bar, the median sales price in Anacortes in 2021 was $707,000. So, that's quite beyond what the median income in Anacortes earns and even folks earning much higher than the median income. For example, people working in technology jobs, even those home prices are starting to get out of their reach as well. To rent a median home, which is about, median rental prices in Anacortes are about $2,400 per month, a household needs to earn about $96,000 per year to avoid being cost burdened. So, what all this means is that more people are paying more than they can afford, or people are living in smaller homes than they want, or they're rooming up with people, adult children are living with their parents, or people who make too little money are simply not living in town. And this all comes back to, you know, why does housing matter? Why do we care about prices? And there's a few key reasons. One is quality of life. One reason prices are so high is because there's very little inventory, there's very low vacancy rates, units on the market available for rent or for purchase. And that prevents people from trading up or trading down their housing as they move through different stages of life, whether, you know, for example, a couple having children or the kids go off to college, a couple gets divorced, or a senior wants to downsize. There's very little option for people to move around within the private housing market. Economic development and essential workers. Many workers in Anacortes, we heard, simply cannot afford local housing, especially working in the service industry and retail side, and even some of your industrial employers or industrial workers are not able to find housing in town, which contributes to problems of business recruitment and expansion. And also, folks who don't live in town but work in town don't have a strong connection to the community. So, some of the social fabric of Anacortes gets a little bit frayed when people who work there aren't able to live there. And because people are commuting more into town to find housing elsewhere outside Anacortes, that obviously has an impact on transportation. Folks will drive more into town if they can't afford to live there, which also has impacts on emissions and environmental sustainability. Protecting rural areas is critical as Anacortes and Anacortes is not alone. Again, a lot of cities are having this challenge. If cities do not provide enough housing, there's more pressure on the rural farms and forests and other resource lands outside of cities to develop those. And I think most Washingtonians would agree we want to protect and continue to cherish those resources. And lastly, there is a strong link between homelessness and housing prices. Housing prices that are beyond the needs of low-income people simply make people more vulnerable to living on the streets or in shelters. Next, I'll briefly go through the community engagement reports that we did for the Housing Action Plan. The goal of this was to hear from a variety of perspectives and to provide some direction to the work, and also to inform people of the project and get their feedback. We did 15 stakeholder interviews this spring with housing organizations, builders, a couple of major employers in town and other just everyday residents. And you can see the list here. We think this captured a pretty good range of perspectives with the help of staff to put together that list. Overall, stakeholders confirm that low- and moderate-income workers and fixed-income retirees are struggling to afford housing in Anacortes. There's concern that essential service and retail workers are leaving, and that there's a real risk of Anacortes becoming more of a retirement-focused community, especially for high-income individuals, without kind of a mixture of people that make the community strong. This is connected to other issues in town such as constraints in healthcare services, lack of transits, and lack of social services. There was a perception that a lot of nonprofit entities working in town are pretty effective in providing support for low-income and homeless individuals, but more coordination between those nonprofit providers and the city and other government agencies would be helpful. Cost inputs for housing are going in the wrong direction. There's rising prices for materials, labor, land, and state has some new energy and stormwater codes that are somewhat restrictive and add some barriers. There may be some regulatory opportunities in the zoning code in Anacortes to improve cost efficiency of construction and create partnerships. And there's a perception that the city will need to implement bold solutions for housing in spite of potential vocal skepticism from some community members. We also conducted a housing survey, which had over 1,000 responses, which was much more than we anticipated. So, we thank everyone for contributing their time to that. If anyone here filled that out, we got some great confirmation of some of the direction we were going in, and we also adjusted our approach in a couple of other areas. Generally, a lot of it lines up with the stakeholder feedback. We heard that a lot of homeowners are fairly comfortable in their current living situation, but, you know, people know that even if they try to sell their home, they don't have a lot of other places to go to in town, just given the price of housing has gone up so much. Renters tend to be in favor of more housing actions, and owners, but both acknowledge openness to some new ideas. In terms of the physical form of housing and housing types, there's a lot of openness to some variety there, though single-family still remains a large preference. And I would also say, kind of alongside housing, there's a strong appetite and more adequate walking and biking infrastructure to help folks get around safely and comfortably. So, we had about 30 survey questions. I'm just going to go through a handful of them, a handful of them that I think are most illustrative of the results. We had a question on how stable people are feeling financially, if they had an unexpected event like a job loss or a large medical bill. Nearly nine in 10 renters report being at risk of losing their home because of an unexpected event, and about one-third of homeowners report the same risk. And because of that, a lot of the questions that we ended up asking in the survey, in the report you'll see, we actually broke down some of the answers between how owners answered versus renters answered, because we thought there was quite a bit of difference in their housing situations, and it'd be illuminating to see some of those comparisons. We had several hundred housing stories submitted, asking people to tell us about how they came to Anacortes, what challenges they're seeing today among their friends or family, any issues with family, being able to move to town or find housing. And they're very, I think they're very helpful, and I've encouraged everyone to read through those. They range from concerns about growth and preserving the town's character to emotional calls for action after seeing friends and family have to move out of town. A lot of homeowners are concerned with the increased costs of maintaining their home, property taxes, and they're interested in downsizing, but they're not seeing options. Other homeowners say they feel lucky or fortunate to have purchased homes when they did. Renters are discouraged at any prospect of homeownership and describe the large and sudden rent increases. There are a lot of stories shared about living with parents, people working multiple jobs, and poorly maintained rental units. A key theme also that emerged is the definition of Anacortes' small-town charm. There are some kind of differing opinions about that. Some people think charm comes from the people and society of Anacortes, while others think charm comes from the built environment of Anacortes. We had a question about folks' openness to developments. The question asked kind of a hypothetical question about how people would feel about an apartment building going up in their neighborhood with relatively, with moderate rents that are affordable to people making moderate incomes, such as just recent college grads, teachers, restaurant workers, mechanics. And surprisingly, across the spectrum, there was actually strong support. People who support the concept said it's urgently needed, and it's definitely needed to breathe new life into the community and to support workers. Folks who were on the fence would like to see more information about specific project design, and folks who were opposed were concerned about higher population density and increased impacts such as traffic and congestion. This question asked survey takers' potential openness to zoning changes. Both sets of survey takers, both owners and renters, indicated some level of comfort with seeing different types of housing in their neighborhoods. Renters were a bit more open, but also had more openness to seeing smaller single-family homes, potentially closer within their budgets. There was a little bit less support overall for multifamily buildings and supportive living residences like nursing homes. We had a question here on land use and zoning concepts. They were described, just like shown here on the slide, fairly generally, without too many specifics, but they're kind of ranked in order of interest from the dark blue there to the light blue. The strongest support overall was for allowing more housing types in single-family neighborhoods and relaxing restrictions on accessory dwelling units, with both renters and owners saying they support those by large margins. There was moderate support for the other concepts. The most supposed or uncertain concept was the idea to have modest decreases in parking And this is just an example, again, of breaking down some of those questions by renter and owner answers, just to compare. In a lot of cases, they were in close alignment, and other places you'll see in the reports, there were some big differences, which were pretty interesting. We had some general policy and program concepts that Anacortes could work on outside of the code. And again, we found kind of a range of support for these ideas. All the ones on the slide here, you see majority supports, the biggest being incentives for developers to include units affordable to low-income households in their projects. And we'll get a bit into that idea, which we definitely expanded on in our suggestion Anacortes implement that type of program. Some other moderate support for renter protections, additional staff hiring, and regulations on vacation rentals. Lastly, on, let's see, yeah, this is my last slide, and I'll turn it back over to Bob. The last question I want to highlight here was funding concepts. Anacortes has a role to play in terms of public funding for housing. So, we asked a number of questions about how the city could get involved with that more or enhance what it's currently doing. The top one was city advocacy for more county, state, or federal funding. So, obviously, that's pretty popular. If local tax dollars don't have to provide housing, getting it from somewhere else is always a good thing, and we do have a section in the report to cover that idea. We had a kind of a tangential question as well about funding for public transit, which relates to the cost of providing parking and allowing folks without vehicles to get around towns for jobs, and also for folks who need human services and healthcare services to get outside of Anacortes to some of those other cities like Burlington and Mount Vernon where more of those services are available. Currently, some of those bus rides take almost three hours, so we want to test people's ideas on supporting increased transit access. And with that, I will turn it back to Bob to talk about code update opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And just on cue, I've got a two-year-old intruder in the room here that might be trying to help me or not, but will bear with me. But I did want to say that, you know, we just did this big code update, and we did a lot of things to make it easier, a little bit easier to build more housing and provide more of a diversity of housing. But having said that, things have changed so much just in the last couple of years, and there are some additional things that we can do. Let's go to the next slide. So, this is just a listing, and I'll be going through most of these in details, but they're, essentially, this list says there are even some other things that we can look at beyond some of the mapping changes, residential zone changes, format intensities changes that we'll look at. Let's keep going, the next slide. And then also, before I get into this, I know that, you know, Anacortes doesn't have the racial diversity that many other communities that are in the urbanized areas around Puget Sound, but those, kind of the non-white folks do have different characteristics on, you know, whether they rent or live. So, say that 31% of white households are renters, for instance, but when you look at the Hispanic and Latino households within Anacortes, 53% of them are renters, and for black households, 63% of them, so more than double the percentage of white. So, when we look at zoning and housing provisions, they do have a disparate, an increased impact on non-white folks. So, that's just something to think about. Let's go to the next slide. So, when we're looking at the permitted uses, you know, we tried to do away with a lot of the conditional uses in the code update, but there are still some areas where we can make it easier. make it easier by making the conditional uses permitted in some of the zones. So there's some options there in the R2 and the R3 zones for some of the missing middle types, duplexes and triplexes, and I'll go into these a little bit more detail in a minute here. Next slide. So I'm going to walk through each, all the four R zones here, and, you know, the R1, we're kind of looking at, well, we kind of need to look at all of the zones. Clearly, some zones have more opportunities than others, but I think we're in a situation where we kind of need to look at all of the zones, because the challenge is just that intense here. So one of the things that we, some of you might have been involved in the code update and even in the comp plan, because it was contentious in the R1 zone, because the previous comp plan actually had densities of up to four per acre. And we, the zoning actually only allows up to two. We did say here in the comp plan, under the land use designation, principal uses and density, we say densities up to four may be permitted via special review process. So that's something that we could consider, and we didn't, we were purposely vague as to what a special review process was, but, you know, it's probably be more than just being a permitted use. We didn't say it's a conditional use, but, so it's a little open to interpretation, but it's something that might be explored. Things like allowing cottage housing, which is something we considered initially in the R1, but didn't end up getting adopted there. Next slide, go into the R2. So the, in the code update, we split the R2 into sort of an east and west, more of a skyline, which is plain old R2, and the rest of the older part of town, which is R2A. So naturally, with skyline and the homeowners association out there and the more homogenous kind of lot pattern, which you can see on the map there, I think we need to be a little bit more modest and realistic at what can be done there. So there are things like maybe allowing small duplex units that, if they're below a certain size, could be considered a detached single-family unit for the purposes of density. That could be consideration. But for like larger duplexes, it suggests retaining the, you need to have a larger lot size to go up from 7,500 to 9,000 to get a duplex right now. So it suggests retaining that, but again, if you do maybe some small duplexes where the units are small, then maybe allow those to be counted as a single-family home. Next slide. And then the R2A, again, trying to look at options to make it easier to build those missing middle housing types. You already have some pretty good design standards covering regarding garage access design and massing and things like covered entries, but the R2A covers a lot of the city. It's the biggest residential zone, so it's an important one to look at. Next slide. So right now, you've got a 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size. You could do a duplex, but you need 9,000 square feet, and you've got a maximum density of six units per acre. Next slide. So there's a number of options that you could do. You can take baby steps, or you can go farther. So starting with option one, again, there's this concept where if you do a duplex, but the units are relatively small, so we're talking somewhere between 1,200 and 1,400 units, that could be a two-bedroom duplex or kind of a small three-bedroom duplex. And if they're small enough, so if you double that, if you double that, that's still, it's probably less than the size of a new single-family home being built in Anacortes. I can bet that it's probably well over 3,000 square feet. So if you build a small duplex, the idea here is maybe you can count that as a single-family unit for the purposes of densities and go ahead and allow that at your current 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size. So that's kind of the baby step starting point that we would suggest. And then going farther is to maybe, option two is look at allowing a duplex at any size being allowed by right at 7,500 square feet. Option three at the 6,000 square feet is to simply allow that, allow a full-size duplex by right. And then option four is to maybe leave a look at triplexes, provided the units are small, and allow those by right. Now, some cities, like actually, you heard that Spokane ended up adopting a provision where you could do up to fourplex on single-family lots like that. So they actually went further than even this option four, but that's Spokane. Next slide. So in the R3 zone, which you can see there in the tealish color, again, the option is to make it easier to build duplexes, triplexes, and townhouses. We already have the design standards again, but go to the next slide. The approaches are similar. The current setup is 4,500 minimum lot size for single-family, 7,500 for duplex. And then you could do more units, but you need an extra 2,500 square feet of lot size. Next slide. And again, the options here are the same, is simply allowing a duplex with small units to be counted as a single-family at your 4,500. And then another option is to reduce the size that's needed for a full-size duplex down to 6,000. And then options three and four are basically to allow full duplexes or even triplexes under the current minimum lot size, provided they meet your design standards. Next slide. And then the comp plan and even the zoning code created a new zone, R3A, and that was based on the work in the comp plan that said, let's explore options for 3,000-square-foot lots and maybe create a new R3A zone. So it's now unmapped, but it's actually, the R3A has been implemented in the zoning code, so it's just waiting for the map in map areas. Next slide. So there's some options to think about if you do want to go this direction, and one option is maybe splitting the difference between the R2A and the R4, which I believe looks something like the left map there. And then some other variations of that are looking at sites within a block or two of volunteer park and schools. Or look at R3A elsewhere, maybe R2A zones where alleys are present. And then another option is maybe just apply R3A to all of R3, so maybe just reducing the minimum lot size for the entire R3 zone, down from 4,500 down to 3,000. Or look at any combination of above. So there's some options there. Next slide. R4, so many of you know about the bonus provisions there right now for the small units. There are options there, too. One of them is to increase the size actually of, as right now, again, you get a height bonus for units where a building has a quarter of its units being less than 600 square feet, you get a height bonus there. So one option is to increase that up to 650, because that's something that we heard from the developer of that project. Scott, can you continue real quick? I'll have to send something over.
Yes, no problem. Family duties call. And I'll just mention, I think we'll pause at the end of the zoning section if there are any questions. We're almost there. So in addition to a slight adjustment on what qualifies as a small units, we thought about some other options that Anacortes could have for other ways to get height bonuses. You currently have a second provision in code that allows a height bonus for a small number of units being affordable, the people earning less than 50% of the median income, which again, is so that'll be folks earning, I think, less than $50,000 to $45,000 per year, depending on their family size. And it requires only a very small number of affordable units. And we're going to recommend creating, recreating a multifamily tax exemption program, which requires up to 20% of units to be affordable. So you could get more bang for your buck there by perhaps replacing that with a height bonus for participation in that MFT program. Some other options that we're talking about are height bonuses for other important services and needs in Anacortes that we've heard about, such as including daycare space, especially in a mixed-use building, development of any type of senior housing, because those come in a couple of different types of flavors, and development of assisted living facilities or nursing homes, to, again, to help the kind of aging elderly population in Anacortes. Providing some development incentives like that could potentially get some projects over the edge to make them more financially viable. One of the bolder strategies as well that we're recommending is to actually consider, again, in those, the R3 and R4 areas that Bob was talking about, or what are otherwise considered medium and high-density zones, is to consider prohibiting new single-family uses in one or more of those zones, but still allow any existing single-family uses there to continue and expand and be renovated and whatnot. And the motivation for that is for a couple of reasons. One is to preserve land capacity for medium and high-density housing. As we mentioned earlier, Anacortes is potentially running short on that in the next 15 to 20 years. This move provides a greater chance of smaller, more affordable homes developing on that little bit of land area, and these zones are in close proximity to jobs, services, schools, and parks, where you want more people to live and be able to walk or bike or take short driving trips to those services. So the chart kind of just shows our first take, perhaps still allowing small lots in the R3 zone, but again, there's a variety of options here, and we look forward to the feedback and discussion on that. Bob, do you want to take with the last couple ones?
Sure, sure. Next slide. Accessory dwelling units, we had a good discussion, I remember, and that was being adopted, and there was a kind of flipping, flopping back and forth between whether to do the owner occupancy requirement or not, but clearly removing it is one additional thing that could make it easier to build those. Also considering options to allow ADUs on lots with a duplex or even a triplex, that's something that other communities are looking at. And another item is maybe allowing for them to be subdivided, especially the detached ground-based one. I know there's, sometimes there's some utility challenges with that, but it's certainly an opportunity to create more ownership opportunities, and that makes it very intriguing. And then there's some little things like maybe, there's a thing called the daylight plane regarding kind of the roof line, where changing a dimension from 15 to 18 might make it easier to build an ADU above a garage off an alley, for instance. And then prohibiting new private covenants and maybe subdivisions, although you're probably not going to get many, maybe in the R1, there might be room for a couple more subdivisions, but restricting, don't want to allow for those that restrict development of ADUs. And I think, well, there's one more slide. Oh, this is, you were going to cover this one, Scott.
Okay. So again, like I noticed, or I noted in the public survey results, there wasn't a big appetite for major parking changes, but we will suggest kind of punting that to the next comprehensive plan updates, to have a bigger community-wide discussion about parking. But some minor things we suggest tweaking are providing more clear standards for duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. Currently, in the code, the parking requirements for those housing types are based on how many bedrooms they have and based on the standards for multifamily housing. So I know as, doing site planning myself once in a while, I know it can be kind of a struggle to pin down design of the site when you don't know exactly how many bedrooms you're going to have. So running a little bit more clarity on that, I think, could help ease the design process for those. We suggest developing some parking standards specific to affordable multifamily housing to acknowledge that folks living in subsidized or rent-restricted housing tend to own less vehicles because they earn, they have lower incomes or no income, so they need less parking. Provide some credit for on-street parking to acknowledge that. That's a big resource in Anacortes, and, you know, there will be some restrictions and some protections in there to make sure that the parking is actually available on the street, but, you know, generally, take advantage of that. Some other options to explore are removing guest parking requirements in more zones outside of the downtown or CBD, which is the only place in Anacortes right now where you don't have to provide a guest parking. Another option, or alongside that, is to remove guest parking for multifamily developments to, again, to encourage that as one of the most, more efficient and kind of workforce housing-based types and allow the street to account for that. Another sort of related option is to allow fee and loo payments. Instead of providing parking for retail uses and mixed-use residential buildings, allow those businesses to pay a fee for parking that goes into a public fund, to provide public parking elsewhere in the business district areas. So that, that's key, because small businesses oftentimes struggle to locate in existing or new mixed-use buildings, so when they have to provide a certain amount of parking spaces, it's just when they physically can't provide enough parking. But providing a fee instead to develop public facilities is kind of a way to perhaps mitigate that. So I know staff are interested in maybe pausing here for questions. We've got about 10 slides after this on kind of the other non-zoning issues, but we just threw a lot of information at you all, so I think maybe we'll pause here for questions from the commission.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I have, I have questions, but, you know, in consideration of the fact that we have a pretty packed agenda for tonight, are we going to have an opportunity to spend time with these guys during another meeting, or is this it?
Great question, thank you. So this falls into what I would consider next steps. So this is an informational and conversation, you know, presentation with the planning commission. From this path forward, we'll be giving a presentation in the coming weeks to the city council, and then at the city council level, having that discussion of, you know, do they want to adopt this plan? Eventually, based on the grant that we received from Commerce, we would be looking at adopting the plan via a resolution, and keeping in mind that these are recommendations that we would work then back to the planning commission to determine, okay, which ones of these recommendations do you want to move forward as development regulation changes, comprehensive plan changes, things like that? So it's going to be a lengthy process, so in answering the question, eventually, you'll have another conversation with.
So at this time, city council has no expectation that we make any recommendations or any suggested changes to what's currently been presented. It's going to city council and then back to us.
Correct.
Thank you.
And also, I want to point out that in that process, we will also be holding public hearings, and presumably, if people have any input in the interim, they are certainly welcome to send written comments.
Absolutely. If the public or even the commissioners have any input on the, what you've received in your packet or which is available online, feel free to shoot me an email. Be happy to take whatever input is out there. And yes, we'll have public hearings at the planning, at the city council level, and then back at the planning commission level, you know, once, once the plan's been adopted and we've been given some direction, we come back to the planning commission and we start going through some of those changes that will be either comprehensive plan or development regulation changes.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Mr. Curtis?
Thank you. I've got two quick questions for the presenters, and if they may not have the answer off the top of their head, and if they don't, then we'll get it when we come back together. But the first is, and I tried to find this information myself via census data, but maybe you've got it. You talked about the population growth of Anacortes since I think you indexed it to the 1990s. Are you able to break that down and show what the population growth of 65 and over tracks at? tracks compared to the overall population growth? And then the second question has to do with the bullet you had about prohibition of new private covenants that restrict ADUs. Has a policy like that been tested in court, and how did that go?
I could take a quick stab at the first question about the over-65 population. I don't have it off the, offhand here, but yes, you can drill into that kind of detail in the census data, and that's something that we can provide. I might let Bob handle the other question.
Give me the hard stuff. You know, we've been, I know that we talked to some attorneys on our team related to some other provisions that, or policies related to the, that issue and homeowners association. And it is, it is a bit of a tricky area, so that's something that we'll look into a little bit more.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Mr. Meesmer.
And Mr. Curtis, to kind of follow up on that a little bit, I have heard that there could be some legislation at the state level that might address that as well.
That's right. I think that's where I just heard, we just had our, the state planning conference two weeks ago, and there was, that's where I remembered it being discussed, and glad you brought that up, Don.
Mr. Molina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. When I, when I went through the report, one of the things that was disturbing to me is that when you look at the variations, they're all variations on the exact same theme. You've got a lot, you plunk a dwelling unit down in the middle of it, and then you move on to either a smaller lot or a smaller building. So maybe we can first, hopefully, when you talk about townhouses, what's the largest townhouse project in the city? How many units?
Great question. I'm going to say probably around 14.
14?
So far, has been the biggest one since, since 2019.
Is that the front to back variation of the townhouse?
I'm sorry, one more time?
The front to back, where you've got the units on the street, and then the second set of units on the back of the lot?
In some cases.
Yeah.
And others, they may be centralized around an open space.
An open space, yeah. Yeah, basically, they're, they're large triplex, duplex, quadplex, et cetera, projects. They don't met the generalized term of townhouse very, very well. And I would like the consulting team to take another look and see if you can come up with a better, better approach to that. The second is, is the question I have is, was there any discussion at all of zero lot development in trying to accommodate growth?
If I might, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think I can take that one. So in the 2019 code Development Regulation Rewrite, there's a section in there under subdivisions that allows what's called a unit-lot subdivision. And what that does is you can basically describe your lot at three foot from the exterior walls and/or as through, for instance, the townhouse down the middle of the separation wall. So essentially, we did address it, but we just don't call it zero lot.
Okay. I saw that in the code, and I was trying to figure out what it was. So, thank you.
There's, if I could just build on the condominium or on the townhouse thing just for a minute. So with the Development Regulation approvals through the Planning Commission and City Council in 2019, we started seeing townhouse development like we've never seen before. We saw more townhouses in 2021 than we've ever saw, ever seen in Anacortes. And so they're realizing that it works, and they're also realizing that the unit-lot subdivision works so that you've got homeownership now on a smaller piece of property that seems to be potentially more affordable.
Yeah, understood. So one last question, and this one always seems to bother me and others worried about the concept of open space and park space within a community. If you look at your concept plans, every dwelling is surrounded by open space of some sort, but it's also, has been defined in many, many studies as voided space, empty space, non-used space, grass, and border, plantings at a border. By moving to a different lot, building placement, being able to capture some of that ground and moving it toward pocket parks, better linked to city parks and regional parks as well as trails, what I'm thinking of, and making that more of a city responsibility than a developer responsibility, would we better achieve the goal of open space, which directly links to my next question is, did the consultants look at any of the work that's been done nationally on urban design for health, looking at how we structure our urban communities to promote health in our population, especially amongst older populations, but also all the way down to kids? And I was wondering if they had taken a look at any of that work that's been done.
I could start.
Back over to makers.
Yeah, I could start on it, and I'm sure Scott will chime in. I'm not sure the specific, if there's some specific document or website or research we're working on, but generally, we're in tune and staying up to speed with whether it's the health, you know, where we do a lot of looking at happy cities and social well-being studies, and, you know, I was just sending Scott an article I just read last night about community well-being and diversity, for instance. So we, yeah, we try to stay up on all those things. And regarding the, the, you know, lots and open space around them, yeah, that's something that we look at, and, but we also kind of look at the context of the community that we're in and, and consider how much appetite the community might have that it can change, and where they might have more appetite for making change. And so we, you know, in that way, try to look at, be ambitious, but also look at what's, what's realistic as well for things. But that's why, you know, townhouses, they are more efficient because they are connected. And they're, they're basically the new, they're the new detached, single-family home for the youth of today. I mean, my, my wife and my, our first home was a, was a townhome that we bought because we could afford it. We couldn't afford a detached, single-family, you know, and now the price of that same townhome is like three times higher than when we initially bought it. And we live in a detached, single-family house now. So we knew that it was coming to Anacortes because it was booming at the time in Seattle, and because you only have a finite amount of land. So that's one way of, of capturing more efficiency in your lots there. But we do think it's important, too, that we put together some open space standards in the code, usable onsite open space, to try to make better use of the lot to create more usable open space. And so that's why we allowed, you know, some front yards to be considered usable open space if you design them a certain way. So we're cognizant of those things, and, but always, you know, looking at more research and other examples out there to see what is, if there's a better way of doing things. And we're, that's why we also want to hear from you and the community, because, you know, maybe there's, you know of better ways of, of doing things. So Scott, do you want to add anything there?
No.
One last related question relates to, there is, I didn't see a single mention in the Housing Action Plan about transit, transit service, or building a community that is supported by transit. So are we, I know we have a limited transit service here now, but this plan is for, you know, a distant future. Do you think this plan, as you're proposing it, is reflective of being a transit-supportive environment? One reason I raise that is that if you, under the current four, four units an acre, that is not transit-supportive, you could cut that in half, come to eight units an acre, and you're, you're barely at the bottom edge of transit-supportive development. The townhouse adds to that, and if memory serves me correct, when I looked at the density on the new five-story building, which is part two of tonight's hearing or meeting, I believe that came in at 40, 41 units an acre on that very transit-supporting, and, and seems to work.
I'm stretching my memory with that one, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I think what we should, in, in, in talking about density, though, central business district, commercial, and I think R4 have no density maxims.
Okay. That, again, we need to make that very better, more obvious in the language. The second is, is in several projects that I've, I've seen and worked with, we've changed parking maximums to parking minimums, and found that it's much, was much more easier to regulate, but more importantly, was much more supportive of building housing for a wide variety of, of resident types. I just hope, take a look at that, that's something I'd like them to do.
Thank you, Mr. Molina.
Thank you, sir.
Do any other commissioners have burning issues? Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. I'm sure we'll be doing a lot more work on this topic in the future.
Thank you. We, Chair, we had about 10 slides left. Would you like us to conclude or get through those really quickly?
Shall we finish the slides out? Go right ahead.
Okay. All right, I'll be brief. These are a little bit more abstract recommendations in the, in the draft plan regarding programs and citywide planning and also funding. There's a section on programmatic strategies which regards a variety of different kind of policy tools the city can use to support a housing variety and also address availability of housing. I'll just mention, I have a slide on short-term rental regulations coming up, and I'll skip the other bullets here, but I'll just quickly mention anti-displacement strategies means things like renter protections, such as tenants' opportunity to purchase their homes, rental assistance, and subsidies for childcare and early education. We've also got a handful of homelessness strategies related to better data collection, coordination with the current service providers, and some intermediate actions to help people living in vehicles, and generally adopting a housing-first approach on discussions of soli homelessness. But to dive briefly into short-term rental regulations, these are, short-term rentals or STRs are stays of 30 days or less in a residential dwelling for vacation purposes. In 2021, city staff collected some data and found that Anacortes has about 76 of these in town, but only 12% of them were registered as having a business license, which is required for lodging businesses. So STRs are beneficial in some ways, and they provide some supplemental income, especially for folks making median, or for folks not making too much money to begin with, but they also slightly reduce housing stocks, so for long-term residents. So there's kind of a menu of options, considering it's not a huge problem today, but, so we start, suggest, the kind of list here goes from the top to the bottom, it goes from kind of lighter to heavier regulations to consider. The easiest ones and simplest to do would just be simply defining short-term rentals on the code, which currently is not in place today, potentially prohibiting them in residential zones, considering they're, you know, if they're like a bed and breakfast, or a hotel or motel, those are typically more located in your commercial zones. So if you want to kind of contain that activity to commercial areas, that's an option. And they kind of go down the list from capping the number of guests in a short-term rental, not allowing them in apartment buildings, to capping the number of business licenses that can be issued, or requiring STR regulation or registration to track them a little bit easier. So again, depending on, we recommend kind of keeping tabs on the situation if it gets worse, to kind of have heavy regulations. Citywide planning strategies, first one here is on hiring a housing coordinator, which would be a new staff person in the planning departments, kind of be the city's point person on promoting affordable housing. We provided a job description of how that would work, based on how some other cities are using that kind of staff position. Land acquisition and surplus land policies refers to some tactics the city can use to provide discounted land for affordable housing developments. That is an option enabled by some new state law, which in fact, Anacortes is anticipating to potentially use on a conceptual project with the Local Habitat for Humanity chapter. And I'm mostly going to talk about the comprehensive plan considerations here. Under the housing element, which obviously is a direct link to the Housing Action Plan, we suggest adding updated data on housing needs, housing prices, different income levels and things like that, to be consistent with the Housing Action Plan, and also some new state law requirements that require that, add new policies to support specific actions and strategies that the city ends up taking. And under the land use element, we suggest revisiting a couple of the zoning or designations in town, including Old Town in the R1 zone, taking a look at how maybe those areas can accommodate slightly more growth in the future, just considering their, their locations and potential state law preemptions that you might see on some of those kind of areas of town. So looking at also infrastructure needs to support any potential new zoning changes there. And we also suggest looking at in the next comp plan updates, potential height limit increases in the commercial zones, perhaps alongside some requirements for affordable housing, and potentially studying, looking at removing parking requirements entirely, or as I heard, a potential parking maximus as an option. And lastly, funding strategies, I'll just touch on a few of these points here that most relate to the code. Of course, we welcome any written comments on everything else. First, we'll recommend that city, the city of Anacortes restart its multifamily tax exemption program. The city had this before, and it sunsetted in 2015. It was, started during the last recession, it was only allowed downtown, and required structured parking. So we're not a surprise that no developments took advantage of this, but considering the current housing market, we think it's a good idea to bring it back. And we've also heard some interest from the local builder and developer stakeholders in this, considering the, the cost of construction. The way it works generally is it provides some relief on property taxes for the residential portion of a development. People who participate in the program would still pay property tax on land, parking lots, and other things like that. We found about 64% of the community was supportive of this idea. So we've offered staff some specific recommendations on how the program could be structured. There's some different options in terms of the length of the exemption, number of affordable housing units that are required. And there's actually, the new 20-year program listed here in the bullets is an option for a homeownership program to provide a more incentive for condominium development and for starter homes. So that's a, that's a new option allowed under state law, and we think it's a good, good thing to study. Briefly mentioned, there's also a new kind of infrastructure finance tool available called Tax Income Financing. It's common across the country and is now newly allowed in Washington State, basically allows increased tax revenue resulting from new infrastructure placement to be captured to pay for that infrastructure. And it usually works best where you're working more from a blank slate or kind of a low-density area, so just looking at the, the central marine mixed-use zone or the central waterfronts in the R1 zone is an option to pay for some potential infrastructure upgrades in those areas to support housing. And last but not least, we know the community had some interest in something called inclusionary zoning, which, instead of being an incentive for affordable housing, which I just mentioned, this would be a requirement for affordable housing in any multifamily projects. It's, it's used, in Washington State, the Seattle program for this is probably the most well-known and most well-utilized. And the way it works is by offsetting costs by allowing extra height or density to get more units in, in exchange for some of those units being reserved for lower or moderate-income people. Working with Leland, we concluded it's not likely to be effective in Anacortes at this time, due to the, just the relatively low amount of apartment construction happening. But if apartment construction and development in general were to increase in the future, we think it'd be worth revisiting. With that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you all for your questions so far.
Thank you, gentlemen. Move along to our next topic, which is a presentation about the bonus height provisions in the R4 zone. in the R4 Zone. Mr. Measmer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and the audience. I have a brief presentation this evening, which is going to give us a little bit of history on the bonus height provisions throughout the comprehensive plan process and the development regulation process. And then we'll talk about a few concepts that the city council discussed and asked that I bring to the planning commission. So why are we here? And I think many of you have seen this already, at least parts of it. We did a major code write in 2019, and through that process, we ended up with a bonus height provision in the R4 Use Zone that allows for, if you have the small units, not more than six hundred square feet, you can get an additional ten foot above the forty-foot to fifty-foot in the R4 Zone. We're specifically talking, in this case, about that area west of Commercial Avenue and the Commercial Use Zone. It's, I think, important to keep in mind that this process culminated beginning in about 2015 with the 2016 comprehensive plan update. And in that process, we had over ninety meetings here in the council chambers, and throughout those meetings, we filled the chambers many times, and I'm sure people in the room remember that as well. It was quite a process, and it led us to those comprehensive plan policies that helped write the code update provisions. So the R4 Use Zone, this map shows you where it's at, basically, and it is on both sides of Commercial Avenue, from Commercial West of TM Avenue, and then on the east side of M Avenue, or Commercial Avenue as well, excuse me. So this is more specifically the bonus incentives. As you can see, it is in the R4, the C, the CBD. It is also in the marine mixed-use zone. And so here, we currently have a moratorium in place, and it's been extended several times while we have been working on this Housing Action Plan. It is our thought at a staff level that some of the ideas that are coming out of this Housing Action Plan may very well help guide this bonus height process as we start working through that here in the coming months. But again, the moratorium applies to the small units, twenty-five percent, not more than six hundred square foot. It does not apply to the affordable unit portion of this section. And so again, planning for the future, you heard a little bit about, in the Housing Action Plan, about how we're not meeting some of our housing goals. And so for the 2016 comprehensive plan process, working with the Skagit Council of Governments and Skagit County, we ended up with a population projection of twenty-two thousand two hundred ninety-three people in 2036, so that's two thousand two hundred and sixty dwelling units. And our population is currently at seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty. And so, as you heard in the Housing Action Plan, we're not quite meeting that goal. We're about thirty units below that, and I think in 2022, we're probably going to be less just because of, well, I'm going to say, the market, or I'm going to say, materials costs and interest rates. We've had several people just back out of their projects and go to something else. So again, the comprehensive plan update, plan for accommodated and anticipated growth, which we just had a slide on, minimizing sprawl. Anacortes is very limited. We don't have the ability, like Burlington or Cedar Woolley, to increase our urban growth boundaries. We, you know, as, if many of you watched the presentation last night on the housing for all, we're bound by water on almost all sides except for our south. And that's, you know, we've got our forest lands, we're not going to be moving into our forest lands or our parks to build more housing. So we're pretty well-defined by our urban growth boundary that we have now, very, very few areas to expand into. D densities, types, and all prices in range is what our comprehensive plan requires us to look at. We're supposed to be, through our comprehensive plan, looking at infill on vacant and underutilized land, provide for development of multifamily housing, and that's why you see more condominiums, townhomes being built, and evaluate what barriers are out there in achieving these increased densities and try to solve those or revise regulations as needed. And these are just some pictures of diverse housing options. Twenty-nineteen zoning regulations, development regulations, those were the key in implementing the comprehensive plan goals and policies. Some of the multi-story building construction costs, again, if you saw the presentation last evening, then you heard a little bit about what it actually costs to build multifamily structure or even a single-family in Anacortes. And we also talked about surface parking here in the Housing Action Plan. And a good example is an elevator, and in here, I haven't changed this number yet, but when we have an elevator required at four levels, that's $100,000 plus. We just got an estimate to replace an elevator in a two-story building at $250,000 for a new elevator. And so I'm going to have to revise this. So those costs are continually going up, and this is just an example. And these are some of the buildings in town that are, you know, the library's forty feet, Chandler Square Towers at fifty feet, Anacortes Family Center's at forty-two seven, and that's a building that was completed last year, it's not the current building. The current building is closer to fifty feet. And where is the R4 Zone? So the R4 Zone is our residential high density, you can see on the map exactly where those areas are. It also includes the medical overlay zone, and in that medical overlay zone, the height can actually go up to sixty feet where the hospital is. The R4 Zone with the bonus heights can go up to fifty feet with the base height of forty And then the marine mixed-use zone can actually go up to sixty-five feet with a base height of thirty-five feet and thirty-five foot along the shoreline. The R4 Zone history between Tenth and Twenty-second, it's been designated the residential high density since 1978. And actually, through, in 1994, those heights were a base height of thirty-five feet and fifty-foot for non-residential, and then in 2008, that changed and was lowered to forty The base and maximum heights, again, we kind of just went through that. So this is where we go into some of the concepts that the city council discussed and asked that staff bring to the planning commission. And so here we have the first one, rezone the half-block between Commercial, between the Commercial and O Avenue, from R4 to Commercial. It has some advantages, it brings that commercial zone over to O Avenue instead of split half-block, modify the applicability of the bonus site to only apply to the R4 Studies Zone area east of O Avenue, modify the applicability of the bonus site provisions to terminate at the east side of N Avenue, do not allow roof decks, and the reason for that was so that they weren't overlooking folks' backyards or decks. And I have some other slides that are more specific on this. Refine the design standards to mitigate increased height impacts, and again, I have another slide on this one. Leave the bonus height provisions in place with no changes, possible concepts and other, a combination of concepts and other concepts generated by the public and discussion during public hearings. And one that doesn't show here is also just eliminate the bonus height provisions east, or excuse me, west of Commercial Avenue. That's one option. So go into a little more detail on these. This is Concept A, and you can see in the yellow what that would mean. Currently, the R4 Zone splits half the block. Not the ideal situation, rezoning that to Commercial might not be a bad idea. That's what that would look like, and that would require a comprehensive plan and development regulation change as well. Modify the applicability of the bonus height provisions to apply to the R4 area east of O Avenue, and you can see what that would look like here. The narrow section there, I just couldn't get that out of there right there, but you could see what it would look like there. Modify the applicability of the bonus height provisions to terminate at the east side of N Avenue. And so that whole area from N to M would be removed from that bonus height eligibility entirely, including the affordable portion of it. And then again, the roof decks, and again, this is concerns from neighbors of a tall building and having the folks up on the roof deck looking into their backyards and things like that. In refining the design under Concept E, folks have thought about what it would be if you were to step the building back, like eight foot horizontally on all sides or on partial sides. What I've heard is that that could be rather expensive, but we'll hear from others as time goes by on that. And this one is just to leave the bonus height provisions in place with no changes. And then combinations, you know, I don't know what that looks like now as a combination. I mean, it could be, it could be some different building design standards, as well as maybe removing the bonus height provisions from N Avenue West to M Avenue. It could be any number of things. It's going to just take some time for our staff and the planning commission to have a discussion on that and listen to some of the community members and see what comes out of that conversation as well. And so this just talks about that during the development of the Housing Action Plan, we're well below the target average of one hundred and thirty-one units per year, we're about thirty units less. Taller building heights make more efficient use of land, limited land left for single-family units. And again, median sales price in Anacortes, seven hundred and six thousand, median income is approximately eighty-three thousand. Our housing inventory is very low, it's tight market, limited supply, and we're, we do have a lack of buildable land, and what we're starting to see are folks that are repurposing the older homes, buying older homes, demolishing, building multifamily in those lots. So staff's recommendation is to think about using Concept B, which would be to modify the height provisions to only apply to the R4 area east of O Avenue. And so, having said that, we still have a lot of work to do, and I will be, from a staff perspective, putting together a notice of public hearing, probably going to end up being in early December because we end up with our planning commission meetings the ninth and twenty-third of November. I don't think anybody wants to come in the day before Thanksgiving for a meeting. I certainly don't. So we'll be getting that scheduled and have the public hearing where we'll have that conversation on some of these concepts and more that will probably come from the public. And then from that, hopefully, eventually, get a recommendation from the planning commission, then on to city council. And it's likely that we'll be able to use some of this information that you gleaned this evening from the Housing Action Plan in working some of that information into your decision-making and recommendation-making on the bonus site. I mean, we don't know how this is all going to come out. Perhaps some of the proposals in the Housing Action Plan that talk about smaller lots, duplexes, triplexes, different design standards, will provide that housing target that we're looking for, and then that we may not need that bonus height provision in this particular study area. So having said that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer those. I'm looking forward to setting up a public hearing in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Measmer. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Appreciate your staff work on this, and I'm sure we'll have plenty to cover in the future.
Thank you.
Moving on, is there any old business to cover? None being heard. I think we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all, everybody for coming.